Okay, we're coming to order here. Five forty-seven for the February twenty-third regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Mayor Protem Muldoon is currently absent.
Thank you. Mr. Harp, is there a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor Avery. There's no closed session report this evening.
Okay. And now we'll have the invocation and pledge. Mr. O'Neil will lead us in the invocation and Ms. Dixon will lead us in the pledge.
Lord, thank you for the people you have divinely placed in our lives who speak truth, love, and words of wisdom. Give us hearts of discernment to know when you are using someone to speak instruction into our hearts and our circumstances, and give us the strength and courage to follow through with that advice even when it's hard. Fill us with peace and knowing that even if we take a wrong turn, your purpose will prevail. In your name, amen.
Please join me in saluting the flag of our great country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, we have a notice for the public.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Thank you. Councilmember Brenner, do you have any announcements or reports? No, all right. Councilmember O'Neil?
Just real briefly, I wanted to say I was able to attend the Lot Trophy presentation this year and specifically bring a city proclamation for the Hamilton family in memory of John Hamilton. I was able to present it to his widow Cathy, appreciating all of their years of service. And as I understand it, the Lot Trophy, Impact Trophy is now going to start a Hall of Fame, and I believe John is going to be the first inductee. So I know we all miss John and appreciate everything that he and Cathy have done for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon?
Yes, I have several. Pleased to announce that the first meeting of the new year, or the second meeting of the new year, the Aviation Committee met last night, but it seemed like the first because we reorganized into new ad hoc committees to deal with special community identified issues related to the airport, the community awareness, government relations, and flight paths and takeoff paths. So the committee is a hardworking committee, and members of the community that follow the work of the committee are engaged and interested, and so we're off to a good start. Want to say that I enjoyed our State of the City address by the mayor, or comments by the mayor in his interview with Speaker Newport on February tenth. They had the most attendance in a Zoom meeting ever, so that was quite a high-demand event, and you did very well. SCAG, let me talk to you about SCAG. Today was one of my many meetings of the SCAG Regional Council and the Community Economic and Human Development Committee, and this meeting was to have a final vote of the representative cities of SCAG, which includes all the cities of Orange County, on the RENA appeal issue. As many of you know, the city of Newport Beach appealed our RENA allocation, as did thirty-four other cities, not thirty-four, twenty-four other cities, I believe, and all those appeals were rejected except for two, and those two that were accepted, their RENA allocations were spread across the rest of the city. So we did have our RENA number increase. I voted no on the RENA plan, the final RENA plan, representing the city of Newport Beach, and the vote was twenty-five yes to accept the RENA plan, to twelve no's, so the city of Newport Beach was one of twelve no's. And then there was a resolution to go forward, to work with the legislature, work with housing and community development, to have a smoother process. Many people said this current RENA process was not democratic, and it was against every city's local government principles, and therefore people want to have a better relationship working with the state going forward. So that was one of my meetings today. And I guess that's it. Mark your calendars. My first town hall of the new year will be March eighteenth, a Zoom town hall. Thank you.
Mr. Blom?
Thank you. I was privileged enough to attend the aviation meeting with Chair Dixon and saw how you run a meeting. Well, very well done, and great to see what Tara and Diane have done. Unbelievable, you know, separating new committees out, getting people, working groups. I think there's a lot of great activity there, and I commend them on the job they've done previously, and we look to actually getting some great new things happening as well. I'm going to speak briefly on the business side. You know, there's been a lot of invigoration in our business community recently, and so I'd like to really kind of keep promoting that. People are feeling more comfortable, they're going out more and more, and you can see it and feel it in Newport, and I think it's a wonderful and welcome change. It brings the sales tax revenue we love as a city, and you also feel it with both the residents and the business community alike. And I think we've really maintained a great hotspot of economic activity during this entire process. The one caveat there are the hotels. You know, I was on a meeting with Marriott International, and it was not the best forecast. And I was really, really surprised to hear that they're looking for about a 2024 return to levels of regularity. And that's frightening because business, travel, and a lot of those things, and so I, you know, for anything, I just want to encourage everyone to stay focused on the community, to help out wherever you can, to shop local. I know Will O'Neil's been great on that, and really promoting it among the community. And so I just want to keep saying it. I think you can feel it. You can feel it in Newport, and I'm proud to be part of that. So thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Duffield?
Well, I would like to just chime in on what Councilman Bloom just said. I would agree, our businesses are flourishing. It's unbelievable, and we're very fortunate. I know others aren't, but we want to encourage all those to keep trying and keep your head up, keep going, because it doesn't seem like, if you can just hang in there, it won't be long, and we'll be back to normal. So keep it going.
Thank you. And I've went to an administrative committee meeting at Orange County Sanitation District, where I'm a board member, and sort of an organizational meeting, and also attended the meeting of the Ad Hoc Committee on Homelessness and a Finance Committee meeting. Next, we have the consideration of matters which council members have asked to place on a future agenda. This is not a matter for discussion because we are just polling the council to see if three council members would like to discuss the matter at a future date.
That was unanimous, six-zero, to bring it back. This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items one through fifteen. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Councilmember Brenner, do you have any items? Councilmember O'Neil?
None, but Ms. Brown, I'm keeping track for the motion. Are there any changes to the minutes?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Minor, thank you.
Councilmember Dixon?
I have none.
Councilmember Blom?
No changes, thank you.
Councilmember Duffield?
And I have none.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar with modifications of the minutes from the clerk.
Do you have a second?
Second. One second.
All right. Yes.
I just realized, it's just a comment. Item number fifteen, may I just speak for a moment?
Of course.
I just want to comment on the fiscal year, second quarter financial report. I just want to commend city staff for continuing to manage the city's fiscal health as best as anyone could want during this difficult economic time, as we've just talked about momentarily ago, and some of our numbers, as was reported to the Finance Committee. Property taxes are holding steady and slightly increasing. Sales tax and TOT are below what we normally would expect, but they're higher than what we had projected, and I just want to commend the city manager and our new financial director, Scott.
Catlett.
I can't say his name. Catlett, excuse me, Scott, for your excellent financial management and getting us through this difficult time, and we still have reduced revenues. Obviously, we're operating on a reduced revenue basis. All is not recovered, but we are managing through it, and I just want to commend staff for a job well done so far. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to hear public comments from those waiting in the community room. So please step forward. Any public comments? Okay.
I think this is the time to speak on the comments on the consent calendar. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Lee Pearl, and I want to address item number six, Central Balboa Island Undergrounding Utilities. Many people don't realize that my wife, Sue, and I have only lived on the island a little over eight years, and during this entire time, we have worked to make Balboa Island better. We both have always had a philosophy to leave the island better for future generations. That's why we would have taken on this project, and Sue and I, along with several other members, were the proponent committee for the underground utilities. Today, we're at the end of a six-month effort where I'm proud to have worked with some of the greatest people who have dedicated their lives to volunteerism on Balboa Island, our committee and the dedicated people that felt the importance of moving the project forward before Edison's subsidies disappear or they decide to upgrade our overhead system. We did this project with the highest integrity and used no arm twisting. A no vote was a no vote, and no further correspondence was sent to a person opposing the project. Sue and I have done our part. We financed the process and spent the last six months coordinating the effort to objectively measure the interest in getting a guaranteed number and holding an election to determine if the project will go forward. It turns out there is enough interest. That's all the majority are asking for. I want to take this moment to thank the dedicated people that worked on the project. I really can't thank everybody that worked on the project, but the three project proponents were Tom Houston, Larry Calistat, and Jim Kelly. I want to acknowledge Dave Webb and Mike Sinicori of the city staff, and really the city council for allowing staff to handle the construction part of undergrounding. A lot of projects have now moved forward because of that effort and the vision of the city council. Finally, I have to thank my wife, Sue Pearl, who was our co-chair and invested the same six months that I did in this process to make Balboa Island better for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearl. Any other comments in the community room? Please come forward.
Mayor Avery, city council members, my name is Jim Maloney. I think many of you know me and my wife Erin. We live on the island. I work with a variety of organizations on the island, including Lee Pearl, with the BIIA, and other folks at the BIPA. My primary purpose here today is to talk about this Assessment District number one-two-four. As some of you may know, several representatives of the community met with Mike Sinicori and folks who work for NV5 Inc., the consultant that will receive approximately $135,000 if you vote to proceed with this matter. Number of the residents had concerns. First, I'll just point out that, you know, my wife and I are blessed, own many homes on the island, mostly historic cottages, and we can certainly afford to pay the $30-plus-thousand assessment for this undergrounding project. The reason I'm here, and the reason people are often confused as to why I speak up, is I'm speaking for the minority, I'm speaking for perhaps those who are older and who can't afford this. There's many who live on the island who simply cannot afford $30,000 plus the additional costs of undergrounding on their property, and I have some concerns about some of the information that was represented to people in the solicitation of the signatures for the petition. Specifically, the proponents used a 2% interest rate. My wife and I just got a bill for the property on the West End, and the city right now is telling us it's going to be 3.5%. So literally, for our property on the West End, it's going to be 3.5% if you finance it. So it's kind of misleading to tell people it's 2%, and it's 150 a month if you span it over 20 years, when in fact, the real rate is probably higher than 2. It's probably closer to 3.5%, and interest rates are going to be going up shortly, so it's probably closer to 4%. That could be $200 a month to an elderly person on the island. We've gotten responses and signatures from people who are 104 years old, if you can believe that, that live on the island, own property on the island. And there have been residents that have been sort of chased down, if you will. If they voted no or signed a revocation of consent, people were at their door, trying to coax them into changing their vote, and I think that's just inappropriate. It should be a very fair and balanced presentation of whether people want this to go through. As I've always said, my wife and I can pay it, and we will pay it, but I do think that some concern and some attention needs to be taken for those who maybe are of lesser means, they're older in age, and $200 a month is a lot when you're renting out an apartment over a garage to pay your taxes and pay your other living expenses. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the community room? Please come forward.
My name is Dan Abbott. I'm a resident of Balboa Island. I'm also a member of the Volunteer Committee to support the undergrounding of the wires on the island, and as a member of that committee, I was given an assignment to approach approximately 20-plus homes. My experience during that endeavor was very positive. Everyone was very much in support, except for one woman who was vehemently opposed to it. She told me that Mr. McCaffrey had told her that the cost of the undergrounding would be at least $50,000. When I posited to her that it was probably going to be closer to $29,900, and I asked her if that might change her opinion, she said absolutely, but I'll need proof of that. I tried to explain to her the only way to get quote-unquote "proof" of that was to sign the petition, have the city council, put it out to bid, and get a finite number. Secondly, just a personal observation, I live in a very small house, live on an alley, as almost all of us do on the island, and there's a power pole immediately behind my garage. In order to back out of my garage every day, I have to do a three-point turn just to get out of the garage. Thirdly, from an aesthetic standpoint, I just have a small second bedroom. That small second bedroom faces out on the alley, and immediately behind that bedroom is not only that power pole, but two others, making any view out of that room really very unsightly. I'd call it flat-out ugly. Were those poles to be removed, persons looking out that window would have a nice view of Ashen Island and down the coast as well. So I'm here to speak very strongly in favor of the undergrounding. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
If I might jump in just real quick, I just wanted to mention, before we have additional public comment, that the exhibit that's attached to the resolution for number six was changed out, just so that everybody has notice of that, and that'd probably be part of the motion, I would imagine.
Could you real quickly explain what was changed out?
Mike, do you want to come forward and explain what was changed out in the exhibit?
Good evening, members of the council. The certificate of the petition, it's in the back of the resolution, originally printed was a draft of that, and that was ever-changing right up until the time of print, and then we since have also gotten more signatures and support. So Monday, yesterday, we gave you the latest information of where we're at with that certification and the percentages in that last sheet of that attachment there. So that's the change, just the actual certificate for the petition on all the signatures. I think the number is 63.31% of the people have signed that in support of that petition.
Okay, all right. When it comes back, I'll include that in my motion. Thank you.
All right. Here we go.
Good afternoon. My name is Jamshed Dastur. I'm not here to discuss the pros and cons of undergrounding. I just want to reiterate the process and how that process came about and what we are doing with the process. The city's stated goal in view of the 2009 fiasco was that they wanted to be sure that before they spent the money for the engineering, that they would have a reasonable assessment that the Assessment District would pass. And I'm not questioning that the proponents have gotten 60% as required by the process. I'm questioning as to how many of the people who signed up, signed up because they did not quite understand what the process was, and that they may, in the future, when it comes up for an actual vote, not vote for it, and the city would end up having spent a lot of money for nothing, as happened in 2009. And I'll give you just two examples of things that may have influenced people who signed up. One was referred to earlier, which is the 2% interest rate versus the 4% interest rate. It's been sold, the project has been sold as something that will cost $150 a month for 20 years, and that is based on a 2% interest rate. The other thing that I have discussed with the city staff and gotten a kind of legalistic answer about is the fact that there is a statement by the city and the proponents that what signing up means is a show of interest and that it's not binding. And that may be technically legally correct, but in practice, it is not, and a lot of people have signed up that think that this is just a show of interest and there is no commitment of any sort. And so I would ask the council members to take that into account when they look at the signatures that have been collected. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Come forward.
My name is Bob McCaffrey. I'm at 1410 Salt Bay Front. The underground issue is not a level playing field. The proponents set out petitions without any deadlines. They sent six months.
Hey, Bob? Can you move the... There you go.
For undergrounding without a deadline, so why is there a deadline now? The opposition group is requesting the council to postpone any decision on this matter for six months, to allow more incoming opposition petitions to present it to the city. The BIIA is not a homeowners association. Anyone can join it, tenants, homeowners, merchants, tourists, anyone. They do not directly represent all of the lot owners while pressing, presenting themselves to do so in the Bridge magazine. This issue failed the last time around in 2009. It pitted neighbor against neighbor. This time, the same thing could happen, and it's a very bitter thing. The BIIA has been cajoling and pressuring many owners, who subsequently have now changed their mind and signed the opposition petition. The BIIA has no business in pursuing this issue. They do not represent every single lot owner. It should be pursued by interested individuals, not owners, not the BIIA. The opposition group has submitted petitions opposing this issue to the city clerk. We are continuing to receive opposition petitions, and we deserve the right to present it to the city. We request the council to delay any decision for six months, to allow enough time for all the lot owners justly to be heard. After the 60% is reached, the next step would be 50% and one vote for those who voted, not 50% plus one of all lot owners. This allows the smaller minority to force the cost on the whole, 100,000 lots. When the lot owners are more educated to this fact, we feel their vote will be more honest. Another question is, has the proponents actually reached the 60% level? The fire station is a city property. The city should not be voting on that. I would like to know if the city voted on that. Obviously, we think we have, we do not have this. Obviously, we think they have not that amount, nor has the city had the time to consider. The opposition petitions has delivered to the city clerk yesterday, and 2009 was the last time the BI pushed this issue. The city spent over $700,000, and the final vote failed. Therefore, $700,000 was down the drain. The $700,000 did not come from the BI, it came from all taxpayers of the city of Newport Beach. That is unfair. May I finish?
Yes.
This was a permanent stain on the way the city operated then. That was foolish of the city. Don't let it happen again. The opponents of this issue are requesting the city to post, the opponents are requesting to postpone any decision on the matter for six months, to allow the city to come to a clear and transparent counting of the 60%. The opposition group has had many discussions with many Balboa Island property owners. Many are retired and do not want to spend $35,000 to $40,000 on this issue or increase taxes. Many prefer to give their equities to their children, their grandchildren, or their favorite charity. Also, this will put a burden on many retired pensioners on limited incomes. Not everyone on Balboa Island is wealthy. This is a want, not a need. The differences between those two are vast. The poles in the alley are unsightly, no doubt, but they are in the alley and not in the front yards. People seldom dine in their garages and notice the poles. I urge the council to do the fair thing. Do not spend another $135,000 before you officially counting all of the property and opposition voters in a transparent count by a neutral party. Please delay your decision and allow an opposition petition to be turned in. Why should there be a deadline for the opposition group and no deadline for the propositions? I respectfully remind you that $40,000 is a cosmetic thing and not a real need. And my last comment is, I was approached by the BII a year ago. I had opposed it 10 years ago. They offered me no cost to my lots if I would not oppose this issue. That is shameful.
Thank you. Any others, any other speaker, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Tom Houston from Balboa Island, 206 Ruby. I've lived on the island for some 50 years and been involved in many volunteer organizations, committees, et cetera, on the city. Mr. McCaffrey is totally wrong on pointing out or, or attempting to diminish the efforts of the Balboa Island Improvement Association. I've been a past president of the association. It is a volunteer organization, but these petitions were to property owners. So nobody who was a renter or anything else voted, number one. Number two, we've tried to do this repeatedly. I grew up with asphalt alleys to walk on barefoot to go to the beach. The alleys have at least been concreted. You drive throughout the nicer areas of California. There are no utility poles. It's all undergrounded. The science is there, the skills to maintain the, the undergrounding, and there's many advantages to, to the undergrounding process. And it's irritating to me as a person who made a, at least a concerted and time, time spent, much time talking to people about this. I personally, there was no coercion. There was presentation of, here are the advantages, here are the disadvantages, do what you want, make your voice heard. And the voices have been heard. So there's over 63% of property owners who have voted to do this project finally. Please pass it immediately.
Thank you. Next speaker, please come forward.
Mayor, fellow council members and city staff, thank you for allowing us to present our side of the picture. I'm a 30-year resident of Balboa Island. I owned three properties. I'm now down to two. I'm also the president of the Balboa Island Improvement Association, and I listened to some of the incorrect accusations tonight. Several months ago, the board of directors voted to support and endorse underground utility on Balboa Island. The reason that they did was because of beauty, safety, and improvement of our quality of life. The city's requirements to have 60% of the property owners, not renters, not anybody else, property owners on Balboa Island, to vote positively before moving the project forward has been more than attained. The effort now before you in AD 124 is slightly less than 1,000 properties left on Big Balboa Island. As you probably know, several years ago, the West End voted at the rate of 77% positive to underground utilities on that end of the island, and I believe there were 220 houses. That construction will start at the end of this year. When you couple that 77% positive rate along with a positive rate of about 64% on the balance of the island for the other 1,000 residents, that's almost a 70% approval rating. That means 70% of the owners on the island are in favor of underground utilities. You know, I've heard comments about there's people that cannot afford underground utilities, and I truly believe there are. There's also people that don't want to pay for underground utilities, and that's their choice. There are several people working on private money to step up and pay for the people underground utilities that truly cannot afford it and merely put a lien on their, on their deeds. I also want to comment on misinformation. There's a publication that I, that I picked up in the council room, and it was comments that the council and the city has received from citizens of Newport Beach. And I noticed from reading through that a great deal of the comments were based on some false accusation. There were many people that said that they were against underground utilities because the cost was $40,000. That $40,000 number did not come from the BIIA or any of the other proponents.
Excuse me, can you, can you?
Thank you.
Two more minutes to wrap up? Are you done? Ah, perfect. Thank you. Next speaker, please come forward. I don't see anyone coming forward in the community room. And do we have phone calls? We have four calls. Okay. If you've called in to speak on this item, you're up next, and you're up now, as a matter of fact. And just please understand that we're working on about a 30-second delay, and therefore, please listen through your phone for the go-ahead to begin speaking. If you do not respond promptly, we'll go ahead to the next caller. So let's go to the first caller. Hello, please go ahead.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is David Tanner. I wanted to talk to you about consent calendar item number three. That's the local coastal program implementation plan amendment for the Balboa Village Parking Management Overlay District. I had a question on one specific provision. It's provision number C. It's entitled exemptions, and I'll read it. It's very short. It says, "The parking management district plan shall also include a formula or procedure establishing the extent to which commercial, residential, and mixed-use property shall be exempted from the requirements of chapter 21.40 off-street parking." I think this plan is a very good plan. I just questioned the use of exemption, and I'm wondering, because there are a number of properties within the plan boundary that have residential densities. For example, RM-E is 30 to 39 dwelling units per acre. RM-F is 40 to 52 dwelling units per acre. And you have MU-V, mixed-use vertical, which doesn't show a density. But all, all of these densities, if there was an affordable housing project, could be up by 35% and asked for waivers. We just saw this on Pacific Coast Highway. It's, and I'm just wondering whether the exemption is intended to enable these high-density developments out in this area, or whether it is intended not to enable them. I would, I'd like clarification on that. Thank you. Bye.
Next caller, please. Hello, go ahead, please.
Good evening.
Hello, good evening. Go ahead. Oh, all right. On to the next one. Hello, please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Brian Ozonian. I'm watching on NBTV. And I'm speaking to you to request to postpone the vote on this issue. I'm a 45-year property owner on Balboa Island, and I'm in opposition as to the readiness of the 60% petition and its qualifications. I'm also a veteran of this issue, as I was fully involved on the past 2009 undergrounding project, which is narrowly defeated, as you know. None of you were sitting on the council at that time, but let me say, it was an awful, awful time. Pitching one neighbor against another in history unfortunately is now repeating itself, and the proponents continue on a path of untruthfulness and deception. Please do not be deceived. Without getting too deep into the weeds, let me say that in this stage, the visibility and accuracy of the 60% petition is called into question. It needs scrutiny prior to you voting to spend $135,000 on the consultant. It needs scrutiny with bipartisan observers. This is what occurred the last time we had a vote and we had a conflict. Verification that is bipartisan by both opponents and opponents is necessary, and I trust you can allow that to, to move and to happen, and have it happen without a vote tonight. The opponents have many no-vote petitions and have yet to be considered. I plead with you to not vote on this issue to award the contract. I also must say, having your own fire station be part of a yes vote is quite brazen. I just can't see that. But it is an indicator of how, of the behavior of the 60% petition and the divisiveness. Let me, let me just say, there is misinformation. I don't know, there are a lot of good people there trying to give you the, the truth, but being a contractor for 50 years, I must say, rarely do they tell the truth about private property cost in addition to the $29,000. Rarely. We asked the BIIA further to be able to send out an opposition piece about the underground project, and they refused to give us their database. So they don't have, they only have one side of the situation from the BIIA, and it's really speaks to the credibility of the BIIA when they only present one side. And just like in 2009, they did not address the private property cost and that potential. There's going to be chaos here, and I, I really hope that you will see the wisdom in this. Let's just see the true accuracy of the 60% petition and take heart to our, the petitions that we hold that are no-votes, that are not counted in what you have. It is very important that we get this accurate, fair, and bipartisan. And if it tracks the way it shakes out, then so be it. That's the way we'll live with it. But at this point, we're not ready. It's an early start and a false start. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I need to correct something Mr. Ozonian said. If you look at the staff report on page three, it says specifically, "For the purposes of the petition certification, the fire station parcel is a part of the six," is, and the, the issue is the voting, the city-owned land, but to, to Mr. Sinekory's point, that, that is not the tipping point on whether it is or is not. That's simply part of our council policy and has been for quite some time. So it's not as if there's, you know, anyone has been trying to put their thumb on the scale dealing with the, the issue of, of the fire station property. So I just, any, anything I just misstated, Mr. Sinekory? Because I don't.
No, just to be crystal clear, the, the city parcel of Fire Station represents about 0.2% of the overall area of this district. We did not sign, the city staff or the city council did not sign this petition, and it is not counted towards their final 63.31% that is in front of you tonight.
Thank you.
One more call. Two more. Hello, please go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Avery and members of the council. My name's Nancy Scarborough, and I'm calling to address item number five on the consent calendar regarding water quality in the Thylons Committee. I wanted to briefly comment on the process for notifying applicants for committee appointments. Earlier today, I spoke with a friend who was previously on the Water Quality and Thylons Committee, and I asked him what he thought of the new appointees and whether or not he was disappointed that he had not been reappointed. He was shocked when I said that, and, and until I mentioned this, he had not been notified as to whether or not he was recommended for a reappointment. He wasn't upset, he was just surprised to hear it from me. I'm sure that there's a logical and legal process for notifying applicants regarding the status of recommended and confirmed appointments, but I thought it was a little, I don't know, not quite right, that he hadn't had any kind of official notice. And I'm hoping that we can come up with a more effective, kinder way to notify people in this situation in the future. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Hello, please go ahead.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Avery and city council. This is Dennis Breth from Balboa Island. I'm calling in regards to consent calendar item six. I'm calling to express my gratitude that the little island has undergrounding, and it is beautiful. And the West End of Balboa Island has already finished the Phase One process and thus received the quote from the city, and they have voted to approve and move forward. This is very exciting. And now, with all our hard work, we have met slash exceeded the criteria of our assessment district number 124 for this Phase One process, where with the approval, the city will do its part for the next phase and generate the firm numbers for the next part of the process. This process has been a lot of hard work done by a lot of dedicated folks working with property owners who do not want to put off anymore or miss the opportunity to have the beauty and safety that underground utilities offer. Getting a chance to reach out to neighbors and chat about this project along with making sure folks are safe under these trying times has been an actual joy. What a great community we have. Thank you to everyone who participated in this process, and I hope the city council votes yes to move this item forward in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more calls? All right. Bring it back up to the council, and do we have any other additional council comments?
May I speak?
Please.
Yes, Mayor. I neglected on item five. I don't, do not need to pull the item, but I would seek my colleagues' support for a minor adjustment to the term for the water, item number five, the water quality. For some anomaly reason, anomalous reason, the water quality terms term out on January 31st each year, I guess, if I'm looking at the city clerk, and that's, and all of our other boards and commissions and committees term out on June 30th at the end of the fiscal year. So my simple amendment to the water quality committee's term is to change it into conform with the rest of these boards and commissions to June 30th.
Yes, so that, if that is approved, the terms would end up being two and a half years initially and then four and a half.
That is correct. Yes. Just so everyone's aware. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other council comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I need to amend the, my motion then. So I need to, I'd like to amend the, well, I guess I, I won't be making a motion to amend, sorry. Actually, you know what? Mr. Blom, I think, go ahead.
Me right now? Yeah, I'm going to be recusing myself on item six for real property issues I have on the island.
Okay. So with the notation of item number six having a modified exhibit and a recusal from Mr. Blom and the term modifications from Ms. Dixon, I move the consent calendar, the consent calendar. Yeah, Ms. Brenner, you were the second.
That's acceptable, yes.
All right, let's vote.
Okay, prior to reading the vote, I need to read the ordinance title for item three, ordinance number 2021-4, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach. ordinance number 2021-4, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach adopting local coastal program amendment number LC 2016-001, as modified by the California Coastal Commission to amend Title 21 Local Coastal Program Implementation Plan of the Newport Beach Municipal Code related to parking management overlay district and plan. Councilmember Brenner, did you vote? The motion carries six-zero.
All right, we'll now turn to public comments on non-agenda items, and, are we ready for that?
Mayor Avery, members of the council, this is Jim Mosher.
Thank you.
As you probably remember, the council has announced that one month from, one month from today, the council is going to hold a hearing to consider an increase to the residential trash recycling fee. I personally think that the council never had any authority to impose a recycling fee to begin with, because it clearly contradicts a voter enacted initiative, or, which is currently codified in Newport Beach Municipal Code, section 604140, which states, and I quote, "The cost and expense of collecting, hauling away, and disposing of garbage refuges and cuttings from dwellings that receive curbside service from the city shall be defrayed exclusively from the ad valorem property tax." That's the basic 1% property tax. And to me, any compliance with any state recycling mandate is clearly part of the cost of disposing of trash. So, it seems to me to be covered clearly by that ordinance. But the reason for my comment is that in addition to the mailed notice that was sent to the residential trash customers, I noticed there's also an article in Stu News Today, which looks very much like a city press release. It describes the background of the recycling fee and explains the hearing coming up, and it says, and I quote, "All protests must be submitted to the city clerk prior to the close of the public hearing at 6:30 PM on March 23rd at the City Hall, or sent to cityclerk@newportbeachca.gov." That sounds very convenient for people who might want to protest the increase. However, the mailed notice says, and I quote, "Any protest submitted via email, facsimile, or electronic means will not be accepted as a formal written protest." So, we seem to have two conflicting pieces of information here, and I hope somebody can clarify which is correct. Do the protests have to be in writing, handed to the city clerk, or can they be submitted by email? Thank you.
Mr. Harp, do you have any comments?
Those that need to be submitted to the city clerk.
Okay.
Mayor, City Councilmember staff, just to follow on Jim Mosher, since I'm here, I wouldn't have come down to comment, but I did get the notice in the mail about the increase in the fee for recycling. As a resident, as someone who pays, it's not that I can't pay it, but I find it morally offensive that residents pay the nickel-dime quarter recycle fee for the recycled materials. I bring them home, I keep them separated. On Wednesdays, we bring them out, we put them in the respective blue cans and keep the recycles in the cans they're supposed to be in, and then I wash the trucks, and I do think that the new trash company's doing a better job, but, better than Athens. But I just watch them pour all of the recycles in with the regular trash, and that happens on quite a frequent basis. So, back to my, I'm morally opposed and offended by paying both at the counter for the recycle fee and now paying the city for the recycle fee, when at the end of the day, all of this is just getting loaded into one truck and hauled, and I would request that the city do some sort of audit or inspection if they're going to charge residents, taxpayers, additional fees for the recycling. I think we'd all feel better if we knew that the stuff we put in the blue cans are actually getting recycled. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on non-agenda items?
Just briefly, in addition to responding to Mr. Mosher's comment, it wouldn't be appropriate to email them, and they need to get them to the city clerk in writing.
Okay, great, thank you. One phone call? Hello, please go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name's Nancy Scarborough again. I'd like to address our Newport Beach accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Last year, the council approved an ordinance establishing procedures and limitations for ADUs. The square footage allowed in our ordinance for one- and two-bedroom ADUs is more restrictive than what is allowed by the state law. I'm not criticizing the ordinance, there were plenty of citizens involved in the process at the time, and we all thought we were doing the right thing by placing some restrictions on square footage allowed for one- and two-bedroom ADUs. However, by having more restrictive requirements than the state, we may be excluding some of our existing granny units that were built over the last decade. The, there are probably some, maybe many, that are built to current codes or nearly current codes and otherwise might meet or come close to meeting the requirements of the state, but they may not meet our more restrictive city ordinance. We should be making it as simple as possible to account for as many ADUs as we can find to meet our regional housing needs assessment allocation. I would like to suggest that the council instruct staff to review our Newport Beach ordinance and suggest changes that would allow the city to take advantage of its many existing granny units and new ADUs as possible. And one other really quick thought about the bikes that were mentioned in today's study session for homeless. The police department impounds bikes every year, and they're auctioned off. Maybe we could repurpose a few of those rather than auction them off and provide them as transportation for some of our homeless. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other phone? All right. So, now we're moving on to the public hearings, and our first item is elimination of amortization period for non-conforming signs, and this is something the council's been aware of.
I had a question before, before we move on. Simone, are we allowed to make more restrictive conditions on our ADUs than the state?
Yes, that's correct, and our ordinance right now is pending with Coastal Commission.
So, we can make it more restrictive?
That's correct.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Great, so, do we want a staff report? On this item?
No.
We're good without it? Okay. Great. Any other comments? From the dais here.
Sorry to interrupt, Mayor Avery. Councilmember Duffield's going to recuse himself from this item based on his business interests.
I'm going to recuse myself on this item for business interests. Thank you.
Thank you.
He may or may not have a non-conforming sign, we're not sure.
Okay, with no comments from the dais, we'll go out to the public in the community room.
Mayor Avery and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher again, and the only comment I have on this item, which those listening may or may not know, it's about our handling of non-conforming business signs. The comment I have is, I'm fully in favor of what staff is proposing. However, I would note that in our municipal code, we have an extensive section 2042.180 entitled Heritage Signs, which protected a particular class of non-conforming signs, and staff is not recommending that we delete that, yet I am unable to perceive any difference now between a heritage sign and any other non-conforming sign. So, it would be interesting to know if staff can explain, is that provision about heritage signs now just dead wood because they're covered the same as others, or is there actually some distinction between a heritage sign and any other non-conforming sign? And if it is dead wood, shouldn't we eliminate it? Thank you.
Mr. Jurgis, do you have any thoughts on that?
So, the heritage sign provision isn't used very often. We used it recently for the crab cooker, and it's discretionary, so it's subjective. So, the planning commission can make that determination. So, if you can get a non-conforming sign and that property owner believes it is unique and it's historical, we'll kick it up to the planning commission and let the planning commission make a determination on that sign.
Great, thank you. All right, any more comments from the community room? Do we have any phone calls? All right, do we have a motion? Or any further comments up here?
I move staff recommendation.
Ready? Let's vote.
Okay, prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title, ordinance number 2021-5, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending section 20.42.140, non-conforming signs, to remove the amortization of non-conforming signs. With Councilmember Duffield recusing himself, the motion carries five-zero.
Thank you. Our next item is the zoning code amendment to allow the operation of wine tasting rooms within the industrial zoning IG district. And this is...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Over here, staff. So, real quick, this item is a city item, it's not an applicant item, but it does benefit the OC winery if it is passed. The representative that's representing OC Winery, Phil Greer, caught me before the council meeting and is asking for a continuance to the next council meeting. Again, it's not their application, it's the city's application, so if you would, if you want to continue the item, you'd have to vote on it, but you don't, clearly, it's your discretion whether to continue the item or not. But I told Mr. Greer that I would ask the council.
Yes. All right.
I'll move to continue.
Let's vote. Oh, anybody in the community room wants to speak to this? And any calls? Hello, please go ahead.
Yeah, hi, this is Emily Fowler, and I'm a local resident. I was hoping to speak on item number seventeen, I believe, the zoning or rezoning, that's up for grabs, the zoning amendment.
I'm sorry, what was your question?
Yeah, so, I just wanted, the online speed seems to have gone out, so I was hoping to speak in favor of the zoning amendment here and see it pass. I think it's great that we're supporting more small businesses in our area, and I see no reason why they have all the adequate regulations in place. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't go through with it.
Well, thank you. We're going to vote whether or not to continue this item to the next council meeting.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Okay, ready to vote? Hello, please go ahead.
The zoning amendment here, and see it pass.
Please turn off your device.
My name is Gordon Wanlass.
Please turn off your device, please, so we can hear you.
Okay, it's turned off.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Gordon Wanlass. I'm a part-owner, my family owns a building on Production Place, and if we're discussing item seventeen, I'd like to make sure that my vote against, or my feelings that we should not approve this measure are counted. We sent in an email, I believe in a timely fashion, that mentioned several points that we've discussed before, and briefly, I'd like to say that the purpose of this proposed change will drastically alter the purpose of the neighborhood. If the industrial zone and the schools adjacent to it is destined to become an entertainment area, the proper place for this discussion is the city's general plan. Please allow the property and the business owners to discuss our future in the proper forum. We also think this is preferential treatment, modifying the entire district zoning to accommodate one business that is currently in violation of the rules is neither logical nor just. The line between tasting room and a bar is tenuous at best, and allowing one will eventually open the door to the other. The precedent, in 2018, the city council and planning commission voted down a similar proposal to this. How many times do we have to revisit this issue? It's also an issue of parking. Parking is extremely limited in the IG zone. Some locations have enough parking on-site, but the proposed amendment effectively changes the zoning of the entire district, with or without the 500-foot competing business and school separation rules. A study of the parking situation on Production Place should be conducted before changing the zoning to allow any new uses of our industrial district. There's also an issue of public safety that should be addressed. There is no discussion of the city adding additional police presence in the area. Drinking establishments by any name require a significant allocation of city resources. The statement that this change to the IG zone has no physical impact is incorrect. Please remember that in addition to daily usage by workers, owners, and residents, schools frequently hold late afternoon and evening events on campus, so families attending sports games, teacher conferences, and special programs will compete for street parking and share sidewalks with wine tasters. Thank you very much for this time. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. We have another, two more calls. Please, okay. Hello, please go ahead. Please turn off your device.
My name is Ian Elliott. I'm a sailmaker Newport Beach, actually, the last sailmaker Newport Beach, we're on Production Place. This whole amendment doesn't sound right. You know, the city staff has spent a lot of time and resources trying to justify this one business. It's been two years since this issue came up, and they've had, you know, that much time to solve it. They can still be a winery, but if they want to be a bar, they should go across the street or to pretty much any commercial area in Newport. You don't need to rezone our area to fix their problem. And then, the other issue is compliance. I mean, who will enforce this? In the evenings, next door to my business, they've had live entertainment with free alcohol, you've had hundreds of people show up to events, you know, with all the problems one would expect, like Public Here Nation. Who's going to clean that up? Who's going to police this? And also, you know, I would like to ask, you know, city staff, why my letter and Gordon Wanlass's letter were not submitted with the agenda packet, which they were submitted on, they were submitted on time, so I ask that they be submitted properly. Thank you.
Hello, please go ahead. Hello, please go ahead. Please turn off your device and go ahead.
And also, yeah...
Please turn off your device and go ahead.
Gordon Wanlass's letter was submitted with the agenda, which, I mean...
Any other calls? All right. So now we're voting to continue or not the item. Ms. Dixon, do you have anything to say? No? Okay.
The motion carries to continue six zero. Prior to beginning this, I'd like to recuse myself due to real property interests.
All right, thank you. So in current business, and the next item is the oceanfront boardwalk update. And I think we do want a staff report. Yes?
Good evening, Council. Dave Webb, your Public Works Director. Yes, I wanted to introduce this item. As you know, we were here on September 20th, and we had a long discussion on this. And from that meeting, we had several questions and directions from the council. So tonight, we're coming back. Brad Summers, our Principal Engineer, will be giving the report, and then we'll be able to answer any questions you have.
Great.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. As Dave mentioned, I'm Brad Summers, Principal Civil Engineer within your Public Works Department. Thank you. And this is a follow-up to actually the September 22nd meeting, in which the City Council did approve ordinance, which updated the municipal code section related to the oceanfront boardwalk safety program, changing the definition for the users to include those newer technologies such as electric bicycles, as well as to increase fines, pardon me, there we go, to increase fines related to those regulations or violations of those regulations. There was also a request for staff to come back at a later time, which is this evening, to talk about four other items related to the oceanfront. Now, items one through three will go into a little more in-depth as we get into the presentation, but to address item four at this point, this item was for staff to consider pedestrian-only restrictions to the oceanfront, so to actually prohibit wheel devices, except for those that may be necessary for disabled persons during the peak periods. So the initial idea was weekends during peak summer periods, I think that was between Memorial and Labor Day, which is our traditional summer at the city. Almost immediately, we heard from the community, there was opposition to this item. We also reached out to representatives from the homeowners' associations along the peninsula, as well as those in West Newport that are closer to the peninsula. They also mirrored the opposition that we heard from the other community members, and essentially, it's related to the enhanced mobility the oceanfront provides our residents and visitors. When you think about those peak summer periods, Balboa Boulevard can become very congested as well, and allowing wheel travel on the oceanfront allows them to go to all those destinations and points of interest and such. So with what appears to be a lack of community support, staff is no longer considering this Moving back to our list, a quick update on the Castaways Rumble Bump test deployment. As you may recall, we, we were looking for an item that may effectively slow cyclists and other wheel devices down without creating a hazard for other users. We adapted this, almost these plastic strips that we could put down on the pavement, and it's actually a vehicular device, but it appeared through early tests to work well with, with trail users as well. We've had quite a bit of time to observe it, I think, in short. It's been good. We haven't received any complaints. We did not observe any challenges that we had created for other users. We did note that they did appear to increase awareness when paired with messages that you see in the picture here with the, the slow messaging in the sign. But unfortunately, we didn't observe a consistent reduction of speeds for cyclists. And then when considering this for the oceanfront, we did note that smaller hard-wheel devices, skateboards, skates, rollerblades, and such, did create noticeable noise. And considering that our oceanfront residents have already commented to us in the past regarding noise of those same devices just going over the standard concrete panels, we felt that this may be, it may impact them further if they're put adjacent to those residents. So when considering this again for the oceanfront, it may be something we could look at, maybe in the commercial retail areas, maybe around the piers and such. But again, because of that noise concern, we may not think this is best suited next to the residential properties. Another item council asked staff to continue looking into was those calming devices such as the rumble bumps, but to take a bigger look, to reach out to more agencies, look at more trails, and see if there's something already out there that we hadn't noticed before that we could adapt to our oceanfront. With that, we took the time, I myself, along with some other staff members, we did do an extensive review of bike trails and community trails, oceanfront trails, along the Orange County, and Los Angeles, and San Diego coasts. We reached out again to several experts and specialists in this field, as well as reached out to those agencies to share our observations with them. And then we cast the net a little bit wider. We looked at the internet and posted the discussion on an International Institute of Transportation Engineers online forum, had a pretty good response from across the country. And of course, we took every opportunity we could to discuss this further with our community. This is just a quick list. As you can see here, there's quite a few cities on the left that are within the state of California, several of our neighbors and neighboring counties. On the farther, or the right side, you can see that we, we had a pretty good discussion with those even across the country and even some in Canada. And these are cities that we were either able to talk with directly or indirectly through our online discussion. So I did want to take the opportunity to tour a few of these facilities and share some of the observations we made. I think first, we wanted to look at our oceanfront and point out a few key things. Some are obvious, like the, the constraints in the physical layout of our oceanfront. This is a picture taken just south of the Newport Pier, approaching it probably around 22nd Street, 24th Street, I believe, probably 24th. As you can see, you know, the oceanfront is narrow, at only about 12 feet. That provides for two six-foot travel ways, so to speak. That's about the width of a smaller bike lane on one of our normal streets. We're constrained with sand on one side, and of course, the homes are immediately adjacent on the other side. Excuse me a second. That bit of concrete, that 12 feet, is used by all users, as you can see represented by this picture with the pedestrians as well as the cyclist. And then when we think about it further, you know, we heard from the residents, we do have a lot of destinations along the peninsula, so it's not just a recreational trail. This is something that our residents and visitors do use to go to those, those areas like the Newport Pier, Newport Elementary School, the Junior Guard, as well as the many residents and the businesses along the peninsula as well. Also thinking about the peninsula itself, we know it can be very constrained. We really have Balboa Boulevard, and when those summer periods get busy, Balboa Boulevard does become congested, congested, excuse me, with cars as well, which lends to more users turning to our oceanfront. So looking to our neighbors to the north, and again, just to take you on a bit of a quick tour, this is Huntington Beach. The picture actually on the bottom is just north of the Santa Ana River Trail. As you can see here, it's very open. They don't really have those destinations, those residents fronting the trail, the business is immediately adjacent. But the trail's quite wide, and that's a joint-use trail as well, that, that puts everybody on the same bit of asphalt. Looking above that, you start to see north of the pier, there's actually some areas where there's a bluff top trail, as shown here. There's actually a trail down below, so there's a couple options there. And you can also see in that top picture, there's a bit of a spur where pedestrians can use that as well, again, giving more options. Also, off the picture to the right is Coast Highway, so the cyclists that may be a little stronger and may want to travel a little faster without mingling with the beachfront traffic, may use that facility as well. Looking at Hermosa Beach, it looks very similar to our oceanfront. Probably the use of it is closer to ours. We do have the homes immediately adjacent. But you can see here that even with the mixed-use trail, it's about 20 feet, so it's just a little less than double the width of our trail. And in talking with their engineers, that obviously affords a little more room for people to pass, as well as for those neighbors that may leave their patio, gives them a little more room before they walk onto the oceanfront itself. Redondo Beach is an interesting study. Before I talk about the picture, it's actually a pedestrian-only trail up above by the apartments and condo buildings at the top of the bluff. But they've taken steps here to try and separate the uses. And we talk about that, they actually have the concrete path, that lighter gray area is actually used by pedestrians only, the darker gray area is actually their bike trail, and that's bike only. So you can see here, the, in the top picture, they've got about five feet of concrete there for the pedestrians. On my observations, even on this fairly wide-open day, that was a bit narrow, a couple pedestrians walking side by side were spilling over into the bikeway. Down below, a little closer to the Redondo Beach Pier, it's, it's actually 10 feet, but even there, without the physical separation, just using striping, I noticed there were a few cyclists that were having a little more fun than they probably should have, and, and were kind of weaving across that line in and out of the two different areas. Venice Beach has taken steps further. They've actually separated their, their trails. The bike trail in the top picture is on the right, it's actually quite wavy and wanders around. That's an idea we had heard to potentially slow some of our users down. I actually found through observation, this may have been a little too, too tight and wavy. I saw some cyclists jump over the sand, and then they hit the nice wide oceanfront path along the businesses, just to make up some time. Excuse me. And then down below, you can see where they split the trail, and the nice use here, which I'll go ahead and forward to Manhattan Beach, kind of a similar idea, they put the pedestrian traffic adjacent to the home. So this would be, you know, a trail similar to the width of ours would become pedestrian only in this picture, and then they added a separate bike trail further out in the sand. And then that, again, affords a little more comfort for the residents there in talking with their staff. We hear from our residents often that when they walk off their, their patios, they're walking immediately onto the oceanfront, and at times, there have been faster-moving cyclists there. Another treatment Manhattan Beach did that I thought was nice, as I was up there, made it a little more comfortable and helped with that separated feel. They did do some landscaping in that sand median, and they also put in some neat features for the public, like this concrete bench, as well as some drinking fountains and other items. Looking at Long Beach, and here, of course, they have a lot more sand than we do, a lot less connectivity, meaning you don't have those residents, again, this is more of a recreation, maybe even a commuter trail, whereas, again, ours is used for a lot of direct connections and mobility. But they have gone to splitting their trails completely, and again, separating the pedestrians and the wheeled uses. So the top picture, you can see where they've added in the concrete to the left, put in that curb area to try and separate the two uses and try and keep them separated, and maybe control the contact points. And they've also used, it may be a little hard to see here, the, the concrete's a little bit different color, maybe a little different texture to give it a different feel. Down below is a good representation of their trail where they actually split it completely, have that sand median, again, that's creating that separation and keeping, say, the cyclist from meandering onto the pedestrian trail or vice versa. And there was also good representation of their signing, which I felt was effective and fairly simple. Santa Monica is probably the newest agency up in LA County to move towards their separated paths. The trail on the right that's 20 feet there, not too long ago, actually accommodated both pedestrian and bicycle traffic. They actually had a system where the, the bicycle lanes were in the middle, and then about three or four feet on the shoulders was actually for the pedestrians, and it was purely directional. In talking with them, they continued to see those speeding concerns and conflict concerns, so they actually ended up adding the trail to the left, which is, again, a pedestrian-only trail, and they followed Long Beach's model with separating it with those, those little curbs. Santa Monica's always been considered progressive when talking about pedestrians, as well as bike facilities. I found these zebra stripe areas where the pedestrians to cross were, I think, very effective. But you can see here, too, that they also have added quite a bit of other signage and striping. And this trail actually is their newest trail north of the Santa Monica Pier, and I believe is recently open not too long ago. So staff did, we did spend quite a bit of time, we talked to several agencies, we, again, I spent several miles out observing and educating myself as to what the other agencies were doing on their trails. And just for a quick set of findings, we did realize, as, as we had heard before, most agencies are receiving similar concerns and complaints regarding faster-moving wheel travels such as bicycles versus the slower-moving pedestrian or foot traffic. All agencies are utilizing signing and striping, similar to what we have done. I've seen different shapes and sizes of signs. I will note that our maintenance of our trails, especially our signage, is, is top-tier compared to a lot of what I saw. And I think that's important simply because it helps keep that message clear and more concise. In talking with these agencies and through my observations, no other agency has tried to put in a physical device on their oceanfront trail, and I know that's what we were looking for, something we could adapt. Unfortunately, I didn't hear or find something. In fact, most of these agencies were very interested in us trying the rumble bumps because that was one of the first devices they had heard. They share a concern amongst themselves that there are no standard devices, nothing meant for this situation, and they feel that putting something out could be a possible hazard. Of course, they're concerned about liabilities for their agencies. And then they're also talking about the potential lack of effectiveness. Moving forward with that and talking with them in those conversations, the preferred strategy with most of these agencies that we saw up in LA County is actually moving towards trying to separate, again, the slower-moving foot traffic from, excuse me, the faster-moving wheeled path. Most agencies, of course, would prefer to split the trails completely if they were able or widen it in some fashion, but we know that's not always a possibility. So unfortunately, we didn't find exactly what we were looking for. Of course, we'll keep looking, it's, it's one of the things I'm keyed into for sure. But the next steps in our mind is really to move forward with the oceanfront improvement project if we have the opportunity. This was always intended to take those next steps. The intent is for city to work with a consultant that specializes in this field, also work to engage the public to make sure that they're partners in the conversation about the oceanfront, really hit three, three facets for this project. First, of course, is looking into the oceanfront and trying to see if there is something out there, keep searching for something we could apply to our current layout, and then explore those larger-scale ideas. Could we separate our uses? Could we widen the trail? Could we split the trail? What would that look like? If there's something that looked like it was feasible and the public was amiable to it, we could even develop concepts and even look for future grant funding sources, should that be something we wanted to move forward with. We'd also consider the oceanfront pier, it's within the 15th Street, the 36th Street section that we were going to start with, or the oceanfront parking lot, excuse me. Look for efficiency, of course, that's at the base of Newport Pier and very popular, but also consider ways to push the oceanfront trail either through it or around it, which is a concern we've heard from the community over the years. And then also McFadden Plaza, you know, that is a destination, it's often one of the first places some of our visitors see, and a great place for our residents to hang out. But to my knowledge, the last time it was, had a real improvement was in the early 1990s, and we've heard from the community, they, they would like to see other features out there, and that would be something we could explore with them. This project was initially envisioned to be in the current fiscal year budget. Due to the COVID crisis, it was deferred along with other CIP projects. Staff is proposing this as part of the next fiscal year CIP budget for your consideration. At this point, I wanted to invite, I believe, Deputy Chief Rasmussen to...
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Brad. Could you go back before we get into the ambassador program, which is really important? I just, get to Santa Monica, right. Go back to the, go forward. So did Santa Monica, I haven't been there in a while, I guess, they've moved their bike paths away, far away from the residents, or the, like the beach club?
Well, Santa Monica doesn't, like Long Beach, really has a lot more sand, and the residents, to my knowledge, were never immediately adjacent to the trail.
I think you're right.
Yeah.
But, so, looking at this image, and it's interesting that they do have more beachfront, so I guess that makes a difference. So they're going right down the middle. In your other city conversations, what about enforcement? I see everyone seems to have an eight mile per hour speed limit. How are they enforcing that?
Well, that, that's been a difficult conversation for me to have, connecting with the engineers. I heard various things that there was enforcement out there. Hermosa talked about enforcement at their pier when it got very busy, kind of say, similar to our Newport Pier area where it became a walk-only zone. I did happen to see two officers on the Long Beach Trail while I was out there, but again, unfortunately, with my contacts, there just wasn't much knowledge about the enforcement activity. But it was one of the questions that I was pursuing.
Maybe that's something we could follow up with. Okay, we could proceed. Thank you.
Okay.
Do we have any other council comments on the boardwalk before we move into the ambassador program?
Just a quick question. One of the things that I, I'm confident at some point during that conversation will come up is how the Coastal Commission has interacted with these kinds of enlargements. So, I mean, I, if Santa Monica is the most recent to go through this and enlarge their boardwalk, what was their process like dealing with coastal, and what concessions were requested, and et cetera, et cetera? concessions were requested, and et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah, that was another question I had for them. I had reached out to the gentleman. I was told actually went through that process with them, and fortunately, I haven't heard back. I will note, you know, the COVID crisis has made it difficult, unfortunately, to connect with a lot of these agencies. Fortunately, responses are coming through. They're just not as quick as I had hoped, but that is a question that I had posed to them, and I am following up with.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right.
Good evening, Mayor Avery and members of the council. I'm Deputy Chief Steve Rasmussen from the Police Department, and I'm currently assigned as the Commander of Patrol and Traffic Divisions, and we are rolling out this boardwalk Ambassador Pilot Program. We're in the second weekend. It was rolled out on Valentine's Day weekend. We've gotten some good reports, not only for interactions with the public, but with feedback from CSC, which is a private contractor. It's Contemporary Services Corporation. They're familiar with this type of deployment in Manhattan Beach, and that's how we heard about it. As you know, we have our Peninsula Enforcement Team out there to do enforcement on the boardwalk, as well as on the piers and the beach, and our homeless liaison officers, as well as our Area 1 Patrol Officers that are out there. But as you know, from East Street to 36th Street, that's, you know, a little over 40 blocks and very porous. We have a lot of visitors that come to the city, so a focus on education is helpful, and having a force multiplier of a private contractor with Citi and DISHA is helpful in getting that presence out there. On average, the feedback we've gotten is that they've had over 100 contacts on a shift, which is going from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Saturdays and Sundays. So we're going to continue with the program. We'll have a lot of data by the end of it, especially as we go into summer, and this pilot program's set to go through December of this year. And at that point, we'll have further information from the council.
Great.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Dixon?
Thank you, Steve. Hours of operation, are those, can that be adjusted as we go forward, as the days get longer?
The Area 1 Commander, Lieutenant Pete Carpenteri, is going to be the program coordinator for the program, and as we get concerns or any questions that come up, certain areas that may, we may have hotspots or areas where there's problems. The way they set it up within East Street to 36th, it's broken up at 15th Street, so from East Street to 15th and then from 15th to 36th, they're going to run two different teams of two. One of them will be a supervisor, and then that will also have some flexibilities, whether it's a certain day of the week, if we have a special event, or a holiday coming up, we can deploy whatever hours and days. We just need to give them some advance notice of a couple weeks, but we'll be able to adjust, and that'll be within the discretion of Lieutenant Carpenteri.
So could you just describe how they approach someone on the boardwalk who's speeding or doing something that is against the code?
Yeah, so the HLO and PET Team Sergeant, Jenny Kreske, she meets with the team as they arrive for the day, and there's a group of about 12 to 15 that will be cycling through these positions, and so each time that they're out to deploy, they meet with Sergeant Kreske, and basically, we set those expectations, give them materials and education on what they need to pass information on to the public. And again, they're very experienced. They've had a lot of experience in Manhattan Beach with similar programs in educating the public as to what the ordinances and regulations are on the boardwalk.
Are they slowing them down and say, here's a brochure?
Yeah, they're contacting, and also, many people, because they have a bright yellow vest with Citi and DISHA, and they represent the city, and on the back, it says Newport Beach Ambassador. People are reaching out to them. It's not just on the enforcement side. They're also asking them for directions, information, and we provided them a lot of information to be able to educate beach visitors, as well as giving directions to members of the public.
Do they comment just over two weekends anecdotally, just their presence? Is that having any kind of traffic calming effect?
It has, and in fact, they've observed other things that they've been able to pass along to the Police Department. They observed vandalism that was able to be reported and addressed. So overall, their focus is quality of life, and whether that's calling for enforcement or requests for enforcement, that can be handled, but the majority of their contacts have been very positive, and people have complied.
Just one other question regarding our current code that we did amend last September. Clarify for me, did you say, Brad or Commander, did you say that motorized scooters are permitted? Who knows the answer to that question?
Well, motorized scooters are not allowed on the boardwalk.
Okay.
And the, there's also mopeds. Those, that would obviously not be allowed on the boardwalk.
What about motorized skateboards?
Uh, no.
Is that clear in our code?
Scooter, no. Scooters would not be allowed.
Okay, and so, are they, the Ambassador Team cannot enforce, correct?
Well, they can educate, and they can have the person advise them to leave the boardwalk if it's not permitted on the boardwalk. And if there's a lack of compliance, then they can call the PET Team, the Police Department. They can address it on the enforcement side.
Okay, that's good. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Great. Thank you so much. So, this is an update item, and it's a receivable file item, so there's no action to be taken, but if there's anyone from the public who wish to comment from the community room, we can hear that now. And any phone calls? Three. Hello, please go ahead. Yeah, please mute your device and go ahead. Please mute your device and go ahead.
Oh, okay, right now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, this is, yes, this is Bud Reevely. I live on Newport Island. I use the boardwalk.
Please go ahead, Bud. Just turn off your device and speak into your phone.
I have turned off my TV now.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I'm having a hard time. Sorry. I'm trying to get the television to stop. Okay, now, can you hear me?
Yes.
No, I'm sorry. I've been using the boardwalk probably for the last 30 years, and recently, now, in the last several, I just switched from the boardwalk to the alleys, because the alleys are peaceful, there's not much happening, you don't have to worry about what's coming up behind you and whizzing by you. The only solution to this, and it's pretty clear from other cities, you've got to separate these two paths. It would be a very enjoyable thing for both groups, the pedestrians and the people that want to run motorcycles and skateboards and cars. And I even saw something that looked like a car on Sunday. There's a four-wheel device with a steering wheel and two people sitting in a cab, and it took up about a third of the walkway, and I tried to stop him and say, what are you guys doing here? And they just said, this isn't allowed. Don't worry about it. And it's not allowed, and the place is getting really dangerous. You're going to have a problem. Why don't you start the process of separating the boardwalk in two parts, a wheeled part and a pedestrian part? It's simple. And that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Hello, please mute your device and go ahead. They hang up? Hello, please mute your device and go ahead, please.
Hello, my name is Denise Silverman. Good evening.
Hello, Denise.
Mary for members. I appreciate your bringing this issue of oceanfront boardwalk safety update back to the fore, and we've gone round and round on this issue for somewhere between eight and 10 years, and I appreciate the staff's trying to bring data to the fore, but it still remains, as a former city attorney used to call it, clear as mud. To focus on the issues, there are clearly some results from the staff study that would narrow the direction in terms of solution. So first, let's just take this idea of the speed bumps or some facsimile thereof, take it off the table. It's going to increase the hazard and not going to do anything to address what the issues are. Secondly, in terms of the widening of the boardwalk, widening the boardwalk will just create more chaos and more traffic unless there is some significant limitation on the types of uses. There is a long-term potential, and it's a complex undertaking of many years and multiple millions of dollars to create a second path. So that may be something that comes up in the general plan, but that is not something that is going to resolve the problems at hand, which are primarily safety-related and also not beauty, but aesthetics, or the ability to use the boardwalk feeling comfortable. If you look at the pictures, and we need enforcement, we just need to get focused in on enforcement. A group of residents did observe the ambassadors. I think they're very professional in terms of education. That's fine to do it, but I'd ask the question of the council, as well as staff, what is the plan to transition from education to enforcement? They went through this in Laguna Beach and a number of the other cities, and all transitioned from education to enforcement to address the safety type of problems. So we need to get back again focused on safety. You heard people talk about safety relative to the undergrounding. They mentioned safety and beauty. It's become clearer across a variety of issues that safety is of high priority to the residents in this community, and we're just astounded at why staff and the council keep dancing around this, going round and round in circles. Why don't we get focused on enforcement so we can get some results on safety and start limiting the number of uses? This problem is not going to get better. Those pictures that staff presented this evening show almost no population on the boardwalks in every single example. If one were to take sample from oceanfront boardwalk here, it would look completely different.
All right, Denise, thank you.
So we ask that some action on enforcement be taken. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Do we have another call? Hello, please mute your device and go ahead. Please mute your device.
My name is Maureen Cotton.
Yeah, Maureen, could you turn off your TV or whatever you're watching?
I'm not, I'm actually not. I've been listening to your whole thing. Give me a second. Hello?
Hello.
Is any better?
Much better.
Hi, this is Maureen Cotton. I'm the president of the Central Newport Beach Community Association. And as was discussed earlier, obviously, we've been having discussions, and in a nutshell, the enforcement piece of this discussion seems to have been not a part of the city staff's directive, and it's a very big component of this. We've been talking about this for a great deal of time. I do think that it's great that you guys are exploring new things. What was not mentioned, when rumble strips were mentioned, was that it was an emphatic, nobody wanted them on the oceanfront boardwalk by all three community associations that were part of the call. So I don't believe that's something that belongs in front of anything, and it was mentioned that other cities are concerned about the legal problems of having these types of hazards present and the associated trip and fall hazards and subsequent lawsuits. Anyways, the point I'm trying to make is that we are interested in enforcement. The ambassadors are a nice touch, but I'm on the boardwalk almost every single day, and the electric bikes are going extremely fast. They're large, they're fast, and there's lots of them, and summer is upon us. It'll be here in a couple months, and right now, I just don't see that it's, that the component of enforcement has been highly addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, please mute your device and go ahead.
Hi, my name is Edmund Rosen, and I support the comments that have been made by previous callers. The issue is not really the infrastructure that we have, but the lack of enforcement. I have observed, police officers, I was walking the boardwalk, I walk every day, a skateboarder went by, and the police officer stopped the skateboarder, yes, to let them know and educate that they were not allowed in the boardwalk. And when I asked the police officer afterwards, why, there was not a citation or something, I'll say, well, it's the first time I see them going around. When we look around, there were not even signs nearby that would say no skateboards. In previous meetings, we talked about improving the signs, and I haven't heard anything about that in this presentation. And also, in this presentation, we have heard how other cities have trouble with enforcement, or the staff observe people in bicycles moving and going, moving to the pedestrian-only boardwalk. Well, I can see that happening here. So making a second boardwalk or wider boardwalk, it will bring more issues, more problems. What we need to address is the behavior that we want to change, rather than talking about changing what we have as a boardwalk. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hello, please mute your device and go ahead.
Hello, Brian Azillion again. A few points. One is, because of COVID, for the last year, we've experienced a lot more people that are staying at home on the peninsula. Translation, a lot more people using the boardwalk, and a lot more people walking. Also, we have surrounding communities in the greater county area, and also from Los Angeles County that come. Everybody brings their bikes, and they use the boardwalk. They may know these rules maybe one weekend out of 10, six, but, you know, they're gone, and they're bringing with them, as far, also, excuse me, the rental shops, new devices every day. As we sit here, more are being developed in different kinds. Single, large-wheel skateboards that are remote-control powered, electric skateboards that was mentioned earlier, I think you called them scooters. Every style is hitting the boardwalk daily, and it's rapidly growing. So it's not as much walkers, but walkers have to just really be careful when they're walking, because they're overcome by not just one or two, but sometimes six or 10. They rent them in bulk, and there's a whole train coming. It's quite remarkable, but I think what this says is that the boardwalk is one of the biggest assets of Newport Beach, and it needs to be looked at in a bigger vision. Part of that bigger vision should be kicked up to the master bicycle plan and the circulation element, because bicycle travel on the peninsula is and has been for a long time a mode of transportation. With that comes the idea and the possibility and the vision of extending the boardwalk to the West Jetty Park, which should be put to the general Newport Beach population. Do you think this is a value? Do you think this is a good idea? I recommend that there be a consultant that studies it and takes a poll, that this should, you know, is this desirable for the city of Newport Beach? Now, I'm not suggesting that it is or isn't, but it drastically... Now, I'm not suggesting that it is or isn't, but it drastically meets the demand of people that are trying to get to the wedge every time they come down. And they're using our streets, which narrow to one lane when you go east of Main Street, and you have to maintain a three-foot separation. And it's crazy to try to mix bicycle traffic and automobiles. And it just doesn't seem right. There seems to be a solution that's missing here, and that would be one of them. But understand, it is a huge asset of our city, and it is not given the scrutiny. I mean, this is fine to discuss it, but I don't see anything ingenious. And I didn't see any pictures of the crowds on the boardwalk. Gosh, that should be the picture, some video, staff, come on. Get out there on a weekend, Saturday and Sunday afternoon, and show the real picture of what's happening. I was disappointed that that wasn't presented. It looks like it's just a 5:00 AM sunrise picture of what's... Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Hello, please mute your device and go ahead.
Hi, this is George, George Refree. Thank you for taking my call on the boardwalk update. I live in the west Newport, Newport shores, and as such, I frequently walk easterly towards the Newport Pier along the boardwalk. And I also frequently walk westerly towards Huntington Beach on their bike way, easterly to Newland, little beyond. Walking in Huntington Beach, the trail, as stated earlier, is approximately twice as wide as our boardwalk. And the traffic there flows very easily, because congestion doesn't ever seem to be a problem. There's no signs, there's no speed limits, no restrictions on bikes or skateboards or anything. But it flows very easily, very nicely. As compared to our boardwalk, which in the months when the weather warms up is a zoo, I'm surprised there's not more accidents and more problems. So the bottom line in my experience is the only way to really resolve this on a permanent basis is to suck it up and widen the boardwalk. And I'd like to see it much like the slices off Redondo Beach, Hermosa Beach, where there's a nice separation, pedestrians on the side closest to the residents, and the bikes more towards the beach with a separation. I mean, sooner or later, that's got to be the solution. So, you know, that's my opinion, and I hope you do that eventually. I know right now it's a budget issue, but sooner or later, that's what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That's it, all right. Let me bring it back up here. And Ms. Brenner.
I had a question for staff about one of the letters that we received from the lady who was questioning why electric bikes were allowed, because she considered them motorized vehicles. And her question was, if they can drive those as not motorized vehicles, why can't I drive my Chevy Volt on the boardwalk? So I think that's worth addressing. And golf carts, yes.
Well, my understanding is that electric bicycles through the California Vehicle Code are not considered motorized vehicles. They actually have their own designation. Therefore, when we ban motorized vehicles, yes, she can't drive her Chevy Volt or other motorized motorcycles or things of that. But the Class 1 and 2 bicycles have a distinct definition to them that allows them to be considered differently.
Ms. Dixon.
Well, thank you, staff, and thank you for doing the comparative research with other cities. A couple of comments from the residents. We have talked about signage improvements. Are we still working on signage improvements? Because as you presented in September, there are a lot of old signs. They need to be updated and maybe even indicate the fines and penalties for violating the code. Are we looking at signage?
At this point, we were considering going more to a symbol as opposed to a text, but...
Well, whatever, I mean, an improvement. I mean, you showed, some resident, somebody sent, who was it that sent signs from other cities in Europe? They were really kind of interesting, and they're universal symbols. Look at symbols, I think that would be a good idea, too.
Yeah, I agree. And it's what I saw more in the LA County uses a lot more symbols than the text.
We probably need to update our signs.
Absolutely.
People are not paying attention to them. So maybe symbols...
Not absolutely, yes, we can look into it.
Would be better. We've heard this, you know, we've been talking about this as long as I've been on the council, six years. And so the residents who express their frustration are entitled to that frustration. I am, too. Enforcement is the key. Now, I commend staff for bringing in the ambassador team, so I'm certainly willing and supportive to see that that fulfill the mission of educating. But enforcement, at the end of the day, is key. I don't know why we're kidding ourselves. And didn't we stiffen the fines in September? So we need to give citations. I mean, if a resident observes a police officer talking with a skateboarder and says, well, that's the first time I've seen them, you know that skateboarder's been on the boardwalk more than once. But in any event, they're violating the code. So I think, as we've talked about before, council member Brenner has said this, and others, years ago, I mean, the codes were respected in Newport Beach because there was enforcement. And we have to get back to understanding that our codes are to be respected and enforced, or there is a fine for not. And the pictures that you used, obviously, were not representative of the heavy business days or the traffic days. We know what's coming, particularly if Disneyland, let's not kid ourselves, if Disneyland remains closed through the summer, where Disneyland is going to be in Newport Beach on the boardwalk. We know it this summer. So we've got to be ready for this. So let's not kid ourselves that we're going to be touchy-feely, warm and fuzzy, handing out brochures. That's okay. But we cannot forget that we have to enforce our code. And that's all what the residents want, simply... I'm looking at you, Brad, I know you're not the police department. Wherever the police are back there. We cannot ignore, and I know you're not ignoring enforcement, but education is not the only solution. It is one of the two solutions, and enforcement is the key. And we're going to go through a very busy summer, and the only free thing in Southern California is our beaches. So people will be coming back. We have to enforce. And honestly, I just don't want to have this conversation. I don't want to get another letter from residents complaining that they don't, they'll see people, but we have to see them enforce. So I'm sorry for staring at you, Brad. You made the presentation, but I'm also talking to the police department. Let's enforce our laws. Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Any other comments from council? Mr. O'Neil.
Yeah, I would just say, a quick reminder, we're focused on one issue right now, but to the extent that the question is how to enforce our laws and at what level, I would just suggest that we continue to support our police chief, who has done a phenomenal job on citywide crime stats, as we've seen over the last few years. And we'll continue to look at accident reports and incident reports and continue to make decisions on a citywide basis. And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. Now we have the coronavirus update.
Okay, this should be fairly quick. Do we have a presentation up ready? Okay, thank you. So I'm just going to go quickly through a couple of numbers, and then Chief Boils is going to follow up with a discussion on, a little bit on the vaccination efforts and things. And these numbers are great, actually. So they get updated weekly. We pull them down Tuesday morning for the week. And I'm sorry, there's a slight typo. That first one should be 11.9, but nevertheless, you can see the significant declines in the case rates, the positivity rates, and the health equity metric. And in fact, the positivity rate and that health equity metric actually pulls Orange County from purple to the red tier, which is great news. And that case rate going down to 11.9 needs to get down under eight, and also brings that into the red tier. If we're in these metrics for two straight weeks, then officially, we're moved into that red tier. And as you recall, one of the great openings on that part is the indoor dining is allowed in that red tier. So I think that's something we're certainly looking forward to. And just generally, to see these trends, I think, is very positive. And along with that, with the vaccination efforts that continue to go, I think we're really starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel. And this is just, again, just the numbers I was talking about and moving to look to that red tier. And then the other good thing is the California Department of Public Health last week came out with some additional adjustments. So even if you're in the purple tier, which we are in now, if that case rate falls below 14, some of the more contact sports are allowed to be played, competitive games are allowed to be played. And as you had seen just the slide before, we're at 11.9, so that's under that 14. So this is enabled to get games going starting February 26. And if you hear that stampede behind us, it's all the teams knocking on our doors saying we're starting this weekend. So this is certainly good news, and our staff here is gearing up and ready to begin that. There's some conditions and requirements around that. There's some testing for certain sports that need to be done on a weekly basis and some other requirements. But certainly, we're going to do everything we can to support our groups to move forward in this way. And then I'm going to turn it over to Jeff to speak.
I'll just leave that with you. There's only one more after this. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Jeff Boils, your fire chief. I added this slide in here just to show you an easy graph to wrap your heads around the quick ascent of the hospitalizations and ICUs from November until now, and then the rapid descent, obviously. In January, our high was a little over 2,200, that gold bar up there that ran. You can see that roller coaster look. If that were the stock market, we would be on the losing end, but we want to be where that black dot is on the far right there. The ICUs were a little over 500 in mid-January, so we're talking just maybe three, four weeks ago, and that whole drop-off there. The peak back in July that I keep referring back to every two weeks when I come up here, the hospitalizations were only 722 compared to a little over 2,200. So you can see where we basically tripled our numbers there. So I do think we have some light at the end of the tunnel. We'll go ahead and flip the next slide there. As of yesterday, according to the state, we distributed 635,285 doses to Orange County residents. As you know, Phase 1B was given authorization as of yesterday, which includes teachers, educators, some food service workers, childcare providers, and then additional emergency services workers. Unfortunately, that came right as the shipments were delayed from all the inclement weather across the country. So the production has not slowed down, from our understanding that we've received from Moderna and Pfizer. They've still produced them. It was the shipping issues with the trains, planes, and automobiles basically across the country. So when those do show up later this week or next week, we're expecting double doses of what would have arrived and what should have arrived last week. So the Disneyland pod, super pod, has closed down for now. SOCA, they're just distributing, they're on temporary closures basically due to the lack of vaccines. The Anaheim Convention Center did open up, and when we do get all the vaccines in, they think they can do upwards of 4,000 doses a day at the convention center with another 1,000 doses at Disneyland, which will be accommodating ADA standards for people that can drive up at Disneyland. And then SOCA will continue, so we'll have three super pods. I've also been reporting that we've submitted to the county, from our standpoint, Newport Beach Fire Department, to bring some vaccines here to Newport Beach and open up vaccinations. We sent another letter this past week offering to do teachers and try and pair up with Newport Mesa Unified School District. We'll do any teachers if the county will let us at this point. So some of the hospitals still have some of the Pfizer doses, so we're looking at pairing up with HOG if necessary, but they can only do 200 to 300 a day as well. So there isn't that great need yet. I think once Johnson &amp; Johnson gets their emergency use authorization, which is supposed to come this Friday on the 26th of February, they have production that they'll ship as well. I think we'll start seeing a larger shipment of vaccinations hit the county, and then hopefully they'll be looking for people to distribute them, which will be us and then people in the community, obviously, that want to get them. We're also looking at possibly mid-late March at this point, that's the projection, to move into Tier 1C, which would include some critical infrastructure government workers. So we'd hope to vaccinate the rest of our city employees, which could be as early as late May, the way things are moving, if those doses do show up. Or did I say May? March. Yes, thank you. And on the city employee front, public safety, I'll take this opportunity to knock on wood, no police officers, no firefighters have tested positive in the last few weeks. So I think we've, with the vaccinations going out in December, you can already see that curve. And I believe that is all I have for you tonight. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil.
Quick question. Oasis, are we coordinating with Oasis to reach every single senior person in the city of Newport Beach and get, make sure they get transportation or whatever they need to get to a vaccination? Or how are we handling that?
As of right now, we have not opened up a pod or a point of distribution at Oasis, so there hasn't been outreach, at least from the fire department. I don't know if Laura Detwell or from Recreation Senior Services is handling that or not.
I know they're open and have been supporting folks who have been looking to figure out how to get vaccinated, and so helping them navigate through the Athena app and through those venues. Yeah, our transportation services are still available, you know, so...
So Chief, I just wanted to say thank you very much for sending that second letter about teacher vaccination. And I know that there have been a lot of people asking about the city's role in that, and I just wanted to quickly reassure people that, yes, indeed, the city, we've been in contact with, constant contact, actually, between staff and their staff, council, and the trustees. And so, once, if the county allows us and provides us doses, and the governor has told counties to make sure to set aside a certain percentage of vaccines now for teachers, if the county is willing to give us, give us the city of Newport Beach sufficient doses to vaccinate the employees of Newport Mesa Unified School District, we will do so. And we've made that commitment to Newport Mesa. To the extent that we'd be partnering with the city of Costa Mesa, we'd more than welcome doing so. And so my understanding is that Newport Mesa Unified School District has a little over 3,000 employees. They would probably, a little over 160 or so are over 65, and so they are able to get vaccinated right now. And in fact, my understanding is there are a couple of locations in Orange County right now that are catering exclusively to teachers who are over 65, which is great. But they have not opened it up yet to teachers who are under 65 or people who work at school sites on a regular basis. Our estimate is that if we are able to vaccinate, that we would be able to open up sites somewhere in our city, whether it's at school campuses or at our own locations, that would be able to vaccinate up to 1,000 people a day. That's probably unlikely, only because teachers work during the day, and so we would need to set these up after hours. But we'd be able to do so on weekends and also during after hours. So we'd be able to vaccinate conservatively five days, maybe a few extra, and then wait the 28 days and then do it again. So once we're able to, we would be more than happy to. And that was the letter that Chief Boils was referencing earlier, that he sent into the county, offering to do so. And I just want to say, as a parent of kids in the school district, I just want to say thank you. And as a council member who looks forward to having every employee at Newport Mesa Unified School District vaccinated, who wants to be vaccinated, I just want to say thank you again.
Absolutely.
Ms. Brenner.
I just wanted to say that parents all over Newport Mesa are cheering at the prospect of having their kids back in sports and games. And I know Jeff is one of those people who's really anxious to have his son back on the football field. So we're hopeful that that will happen soon. So we're hopeful that that will happen soon. I just wanted to share my experience with people. I got my first vaccine shot a month ago at Disneyland, and it took me over two hours in line and going through the process. I was postponed, and I had my second shot today at Angel Stadium, and I was in and out in less than an hour and back on the freeway. So it's very efficient. And you could see, they have so much more capacity there that they could open up. So it was very efficient. And hopefully, we'll be hearing from a lot of people that they're able to get into that Othena reservation system.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Anybody in the community room wish to speak on this update?
I'll add on the youth outdoor sports, that we're planning a full go on junior lifeguards again this year, too.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any calls? Great. Okay. Now we're on for motions for reconsideration. Madam Clerk.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Thank you. And tonight, we are going to adjourn in memory of William Bill Monroe. And Councilmember Brenner will fill the sin a little bit on his life.
Yes. Judge William Monroe was a 45-year resident of Irvine Terrace along with his wife Angela. He passed away on February 17 after a lengthy, non-COVID-related illness. Bill was a proud Marine Colonel retired, a criminal defense attorney for 26 years, and Superior Court judge for 20 years. He was dedicated to his professions as he was to his friends and his family. He is survived by his wife Angela, his daughter Tristan, and his children from a previous marriage, Mara, William, and John. He was a man of great honor and integrity and will be greatly missed.
We are adjourned.